Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Telephone Town Hall. I am Stephen Kenny, and I'm pleased to be on the call tonight with Dr. Mary Esche, Dr. John C. King, and Dr. Elena Mann. Tonight, we're going to be discussing COVID-19 vaccines. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Mary Esche, who will give introductory remarks.
As COVID-19 has ravaged the nation, we are seeing a resurgence in the COVID-19 variant. Our biggest defense against this new variant is the vaccine. And we would like to have as many people vaccinated as possible. The vaccines are safe, they've been used on millions of people.
And at this time, we'd like to dispel the myths of vaccines because it's one of the ways our immune systems can grab hold of this situation and prevent deaths, hospitalizations, and just improve the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King. And for those joining us, please remember, if you have a question for our panelists, please press zero on your phone keypad, and you'll be added to our queue. At this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Elena Mann to the call, who will give introductory remarks.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to be on the call as we discuss COVID-19, as well as the new Delta variant and its effects on people. And particularly, my area of interest is in obstetrics and gynecology. So I see pregnant patients and people who are interested in becoming pregnant, as well as breastfeeding mothers. So there are many myths that I think have been propagated throughout the nation regarding the COVID vaccine for pregnant women and those interested in pregnancy that we would definitely like to discuss tonight. It is a very safe vaccine. As we all know, there are three different vaccines that are available. And it is recommended for all pregnant women and breastfeeding women and those interested in pregnancy to get the vaccine. So it is not something that we take lightly. Of course, mothers and parents are very interested in the effects that the vaccines could have on their unborn child or their children. So it is important to know that we also have to keep in mind the effects that the virus itself can have, and that the vaccines are safe and have been studied and utilized in many pregnant and breastfeeding women and those interested in trying to conceive. So we definitely want to answer any questions that there are out there to help ease your concerns or answer any questions that you may have if there are any people who have not received the vaccine and have questions about it.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. And again, we welcome all of you joining us for tonight's Telephone Town Hall. As a reminder, for anyone wanting to ask a question, press zero on your phone keypad, and you'll be added to our queue. Before we get started with questions, we want to hear from you. So we have our first poll question of the night. The first poll question is, "Have you been vaccinated?" You're going to press one on your phone for yes, and press two on your phone for no. Again, our first poll question is, "Have you been vaccinated?" Press one for yes, press two for no. And as a reminder, if you'd like to ask a question for our panelists, please press zero on your phone keypad now, and you'll be added to the queue. We will try to answer as many questions as possible. Okay, so our poll questions answered are in. We have eighty-four percent of our participants on the call tonight have been vaccinated, with sixteen percent answering no. Thank you for that. We'll now take some questions from you all. So I see we have a question from Ronald from Montague. Ronald, you're live with us, please go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, my name is Ronald Cohen from the Chauvin area. I've been working since the beginning of this outbreak with local health officials. And so I've had quite a bit of knowledge on the subject, and I know it's changed quite a bit. I recently went to my local health provider to get vaccinated. But before I got vaccinated, or would get vaccinated, I asked for a COVID antibody test. And with my doctor tested me through LabCorp, I came back positive for antibodies, meaning that I had previously had COVID. I had never experienced any symptoms. My question is, is those out there that have been exposed or had COVID, never had any symptoms, and would have a positive antibody test, shouldn't those people be able to have a, be considered vaccinated? Because their body has produced a vaccination of its own?
Thank you, Ronald, for your question. We'll now have our panelists time in and give an answer for you.
Naturally, when you have an antibody response, it's to the envelope of the virus. The Delta variant has shifted enough away from that envelope that you have antibodies to, you would not be protected from the Delta variant. And so it is recommended, even though you have had a naturally acquired infection, that you still go ahead and get the COVID vaccine. The vaccines are to the spike protein. The virus is kind of neat looking, it's got a thing, and it's got all these spikes that come out for it. And the antibodies that are made are to those spike proteins. So if you had an infection, you may or may not be protected. And so, so it is rec- What? I'm sorry, there's a lot of background noise on this phone call, so. I'm still here.
Yes, Dr. Esche, we can hear you.
Okay, there's a lot of other noises coming in. Anyway, so if you had the vac- even if you've had a naturally occurring infection, it is recommended that you get the vaccine. And there are some, there are actually studies that have shown that those envelope proteins that you get from the infection do not protect you against this new variant. So please get the vaccine. It takes five weeks to, from, well, it takes a while to get antibodies once you get the vaccine. You, there are two that require spacing, one three weeks apart, one four weeks apart. Those are the mRNA viruses. The other virus, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, is a one-shot vaccine. It takes two to three weeks after you have completed your vaccine to acquire that, those immunity levels that are touted in the press. For the MRNAs, which are over ninety, over ninety percent, 194, 195, the Johnson and Johnson one is somewhere around seventy-five percent. But all this is better than being in the hospital on a ventilator.
And I would like to add, it's important to remember that everybody is the same, is different, and so we can't necessarily rely on the degree, although antibodies may still be present, we don't exactly know how long those particular antibodies for each individual will last. And there have been several people who have had COVID, who clearly who've had it, who've had the antibodies, who still get reinfected. And as we're discussing and concerned about this Delta variant, that makes it much more concerning, because we do know that people can be reinfected with this Delta variant, even if they've already had COVID previously. So it is still very important to get the vaccination.
Ronald, this is Dr. King. I'm a home allergist here in the area. Essentially, you know, what you're talking about is you had, and just to expand on Dr. Esche and Dr. Mann's comments, you had no symptoms. And there was a nice study that came out of California that talked about people with no symptoms, and/or people that had severe symptoms. And the severe symptom people held those antibodies longer than people that didn't have or had a lesser or mild case or an asymptomatic case. Talking about natural immunity, and that's the envelope immunity that Dr. Esche alluded to. And then there's the vaccine immunity against the spike protein, and then the nearamidase proteins as well. Those two entities, the natural immunity, which we've known about for thousands of years, and the vaccine immunity complement each other, and hence the reason that we've had less people in hospital that were vaccinated, we've had less people on ventilators that were vaccinated. And essentially, the reason for that is those two entities, natural immunity and vaccine immunity, complement each other, and the vaccine has to be gotten in order to make sure or ensure that you don't have a bad issue with the virus. And the Delta is a lot more contagious and seems to have a thousand times the viral load that the initial virus that we saw had. So it can be worse this next time if you didn't have the Delta. And if you had the Alpha variant at the first time, then if you see the Delta, you will catch it again, just like the vaccinated patients can catch it as well. But they seem, because of spike protein immunity, not to get as ill.
And thank you, Dr. King. Just as a reminder for those joining us, if you press zero on your phone keypad, you'll be added to the queue if you would like to ask a question for our panelists. I see we have a question from Grace in Thibodeaux. Grace, you are currently on live with us, please go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, this is Grace Guthrie. I have a question. My daughter had COVID-19 a month ago, and she was exposed to someone who had COVID-19 eight days ago. And when she tried to get a vaccination, she was told that she had to wait ninety days. But I Googled it, and I called the CDC, and they both agreed that you don't have to wait ninety days unless you've gotten the monochromal antibodies. Why are the pharm-
I'd like to see that. Go ahead.
Pardon?
I'm sorry.
Why?
Why are the pharmas- I'm sorry.
I don't know why the pharmacist is telling you that.
So the COVID, the COVID vaccine, you can get ten to fourteen days after you have an infection. You can't get it for ninety days if you've had monoclonal antibodies, if you've had plasma with the antibodies, or you had the MIS syndrome. And the MIS syndrome is the multi-system inflammatory syndrome, which is a severe case of it, which you have to wait ninety days. Otherwise, you can get it within ten to fourteen days of the initial positive result. This is Dr. King, I'm sorry.
If you have a pharmacist telling you that, then you need to go to a different drugstore, or go to the health unit, or go to one of the hospitals that are doing the vaccines, because you should be, she should be eligible to get the vaccine. I've actually had patients who've told me that, and I have arranged for them to get the vaccine somewhere else.
Thank you, Dr. Esche. And just as a reminder to those joining us tonight, if you press zero on your keypad, you'll be added to our queue to ask a question of our speakers.
And I would like to add, and just in regards to that comment, I would like to commend you for doing your research, because there is a lot of misinformation that's out there regarding, you know, when vaccinations can be obtained, and, you know, if vaccinations should be obtained. So I think it's very important to keep that in mind, as Dr. Esche and Dr. King commented, you know, if it's something to that scenario that you feel is not quite the way it should, kind of seek additional information, like you did, from, you know, the CDC and from your local health units and medical professionals, so that way you can, or she could proceed with getting the vaccination.
On the same thing, if she had had one of the vaccines that requires two shots, and she'd come down with symptoms before she had full immunity, so it takes, it takes a while, you know, it takes, you wait three weeks before you get the second shot. If you come down before you are fully protected from the vaccine, which is two weeks after the second shot, if you've only had the first shot, you should, as soon as you are feeling better, you can get the second shot, as long as the right length of time happens. Because I've had that happen to several people that I know, and just when you start to feel, when you feel better, you can get that second vaccine, the second shot.
Thank you, Dr. Esche. For those joining us, as a reminder, if you have a question for our speakers, just press zero on your keypad, and you'll be added to the queue. We now have a question from Brian from Thibodeaux. Brian, please go ahead and ask your question of our panelists. Brian, are you there? Okay, Brian's question was, he lives in Thibodeaux, where can he go to get a vaccine?
This is Dr. King. In Thibodeaux, as Dr. Esche alluded to, you can, you can go to any of the hospitals, any of the urgent cares in the area, and some doctors' offices offer the vaccine as well. All of the pharmacies, pretty much in the area, offer, or at least the big chain pharmacies, all offer the vaccines.
I know that Terra Bar General does a drive-through vaccine on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Appointments are, they ask you to make an appointment, but it's not, it's not required. There's also a similar setup at Shabair. And I, I know that vaccines can be arranged multiple ways through the hospitals to get the vaccines. St. Anne's offers them, and Thibodeaux General offers them, and Tashin Morgan City offers them. And I've heard, I have not used the vaccines at, at Alady of the Sea, but I know that they have also done them. They are available. Call your doctor's office and ask where they send their patients. Some of the doctors have them in their offices, not everyone does.
Thank you, Dr. Esche. We're now going to open up our second poll question. So our second poll question is, if you haven't been vaccinated, do you plan to be? Press one for yes, press two for no. Again, the second poll question is, if you haven't been vaccinated, do you plan to be? You're going to press one for yes, and you're going to press two for no. Again, our second poll question, if you have not been vaccinated, do you plan to be? Press one for yes, press two for no. Okay, the results are in. So we have sixty-five percent say no, they do not plan to be vaccinated, while thirty-five percent of our callers tonight say yes, they do plan to be vaccinated. Thank you for participating in that poll. Again, for anyone that has a question for our panelists, please press zero on your keypad, and you'll be added to the queue. We now have a question from Angel Montalongo. Angel, you are live with us, would you go ahead and ask your question?
Yes, okay. If you are double vaccinated, which means both shots, how can the variants get through those vaccinations?
None of, none of the vaccines are a hundred percent effective. Pfizer is close to ninety-five, Moderna's ninety-four, and the Johnson and Johnson is about seventy-five percent. Over a period of time, immunity may lapse, and that's why they're talking about, people may require a booster. They're not recommended at this time, but none of the vaccines are a hundred percent protective. So the, the idea when you vaccinate people is if you can get enough patients vaccinated, then they can't spread it to another person. But none of the vaccines are a hundred percent. And so, that, but they're better than the other vaccines we've got, because none of the flu vaccines don't protect that much. You can still get it, it just provides immunity to a lot more people.
An important thing to also consider with that is this is how we arrive with variants, because the virus will continue to mutate. And so as there are less people that are vaccinated, then the virus will change over time. And then that can make it to where it is potentially more transmissible to people who have been vaccinated, because the virus is continuing to change, because it, in a sense, is kind of winning the battle of, it's learning how to change some of itself to be able to infect more people. So it's very important for a larger number of people to get vaccinated, so that that continual change in replication won't continue to occur. But as Dr. Esche says, for those who have been vaccinated, who happen to get, what would a term as a breakthrough infection, typically, it is not as severe as the infection would be if they were unvaccinated.
Angel, that's a good question. This is Dr. King. Essentially, the virus mutates, all RNA viruses are capable of that, and they do this in a rapid fashion. This Delta variety is a thousand, has a thousand times more virus than did the other variants. So it is more infectious, if you will, hence the reason, if you had the Alpha, you can get the Delta. And essentially, what happens is, when you get your vaccines, they protect against the spike protein immunity. And that spike protein, in this change of the mutant virus, if you will, does change a little bit as well, so those patients that are vaccinated can get it. But there's enough of the vaccinated spike protein antibodies to allow for not as severe a case.
And Angel, thank you for that question. We now have a question from Jackie, who has a question about medication. Jackie, you're live with us, please go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I'm in that sixty-five percent that have not been vaccinated and don't plan to be. So I have a question about the ivermectin, hydrochloroquine, or the vitamin C infusion that my family has had success with, that they've been able to get. What is your opinion on those?
In, in large control studies, they have not worked. It looks like they work, they may work in the test tube, but have not worked when they've done population studies, in a controlled fashion.
So, this is Dr. King. Ivermectin works by blocking nuclear transport of viral protein, but that's in horses and cows and everybody else. It works also against deworming humans as well at lower doses. But as Dr. Esche alluded to, the studies have not proven that it actually does help. There was one study that had come out that said, if you got it early enough, that it did help, although that hasn't been proven in a controlled study, and therefore, the FDA has not approved it. And hence, if the FDA hasn't approved that drug for use, then we tend to not use it. Hydroxychloroquine is an interesting drug. I have some, a lot of experience with it. It increases endosomal pH. And what happens when it does that is that it decreases the SARS virus from going into the whole cell membrane. Now, that's on a cellular level, and there again, that, that drug as well, it's an anti-malaria drug, has not been proven in big studies to be of benefit, thus the FDA hasn't approved it either. When we don't get FDA approval, these drugs are not without their side effects. I mean, hydroxychloroquine can cause your platelets to drop very badly, it can cause seizures. Ivermectin can cause a thing called Stevens-Johnson syndrome, which is a terrible allergic reaction, and toxic epidermal necrolysis. These things are really bad, as well as the hypertension that it causes. I've seen a couple of patients that used it off-label, and the patients that they used it on did not do well. So as a result, I have a very limited experience from others, not from myself using it, but from other people using it for, using it against the SARS virus, and it did not work. Now, if it works in some patients, what that is, is it's anecdotal, which means essentially, it worked in him, and some, vitamin C would have worked. Vitamin C, B1, vitamin D, melatonin, these are all vitamins that do decrease or improve immunity, but there again, they're not a panacea, they don't work, you know, as well. And then there's the old mentality, a lot more is better than, than just using a little bit, which is not true in this case.
And thank you for that response. As a reminder to those that's joining us, if you have a question for our speakers, just press zero on your keypad, and you'll be added to the queue. We'll now take a question from Genevieve from Bayou Louise. Hi, Genevieve, you're on live with us, please go ahead and ask your question. Genevieve, are you there with us? Okay, so Genevieve's question was, her and her family members have all had their shots. Is there anything else that they can do to protect themselves?
Wear your mask. This is Dr. Mary Esche. Please wear your mask. Encourage the other people to get it, and encourage your contacts to get their vaccines also.
This is Dr. King. The individuals that you interact with need to be vaccinated. That includes grandchildren, children, friends, that are neighbors and that. And then essentially, if you wanted to do, say, take the vitamin B, or the vitamin C, and the vitamin D, then you could do these things, as well as melatonin. But there again, they only decrease, or they improve your immune system's ability to fight anything, but that's all, all things, as well as bacteria and viruses. But really, staying six to eight feet apart, wearing your mask, you know, staying out of congregations of persons, if you will, these are the things that are going to help you to do well, since you've been vaccinated, and thank you very much for getting vaccinated.
And I would also like to add, as Dr. King and Dr. Esche have alluded to, you know, masks being as important as is, although you and your entire family have been vaccinated, you still have to be cognizant of those whom you come in contact with that may not have been vaccinated, because as we know, the Delta variant is much more contagious and much more virulent. So we do worry still, as we discussed, there is the potential occasion that you could still potentially get COVID, and then that could even be passed along to people who you may interact with that are not vaccinated. And so this is one of the ways it's continuing to spread as well. And, you know, we do have a large amount of young people and children to whom the vaccine is not available at this time, so that's important to keep them in mind as well, in knowing that, you know, even those interactions, if there's perhaps not children in your family, you know, just simple trips to, you know, a store, or things like that, where you may be interacting with people from, you know, all different types and places even, are still potential ways that the virus can continue to spread, despite you and your family having a vaccine.
And thank you for that. Again, a reminder to those on the call with us, if you have a question for our panelists, please press zero on your phone, and you'll be added to our queue. We're now going to take a call from Henry in La Platte. Henry, you're live with us, please go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, my name is Henry. I'm fully vaccinated. I'm an old man, and I have a son. He refuses to get vaccinated. And I guess I know- He refuses to get vaccinated, and I guess I know what the answer is, keep a mask on and stay six feet away from him or so, but I'm just scared for him to come in the house. What should I do?
Con- continue to encourage- this is Dr. S.J. Continue to encourage him to get the vaccine. Does he give you any reason why he doesn't want to get the vaccine? Hello?
He's no longer there with us. Would anyone else like to chime in on that question?
It's- it's, um, a lot of times, when someone has a specific reason they don't want to get the vaccine, uh, physician ca- uh, a healthcare professional can address what his concerns are. Um, you know, there's this question, does it affect their fertility? Does it affect their, you know, what is their fear of it? Some people just don't want a shot. And for those people, I- I wish I had another answer, but that right now, all we have is the shot, which does work. And I- I have a number of patients who've been able to get their family members vaccinated by saying they couldn't come to their- they couldn't come to a family reunion, they couldn't come wherever without getting the vaccine. And I really applaud those people who have done it. Uh, I mean, you- you- you only meet them outs- you can only meet them outside, and you stay six feet away. You know, I love- you tell your son, "I love you, but I want to live." I wish I- there's nothing else.
And I think- I think it's also important to point out that, um, with this more recent wave of the virus, that a lot of younger people have been more affected than they were in the beginning. And I think, um, when the COVID virus first became, you know, a problem for us, we were, you know, the concern was it was mostly older people and people with underlying conditions, whereas now, we're seeing a lot more infections, and even hospitalizations, and severe disease of COVID in the younger population, those in their, you know, twenties to forties now. So, it's not just a virus that's confined, um, to the elderly or really sick people. We've had several perfectly healthy people without any of the risk factors who have contracted COVID and have been very ill from it, requiring hospitalization and ventilation, um, support. I mean, they've had to have a tube inserted to help them breathe. So, you know, I would say it's very important to- to let him know that as well, that, um, you know, many times, especially our younger people have that invincibility, um, thought in their head, that it can't happen to them, or that they're young enough and healthy enough to withstand it. But I would suggest, you know, just educating him on why would he want to take that chance, you know, for himself and for you, um, and other family members.
Henry, this is Dr. King. I applaud your, uh, your getting the vaccine, and- and I also completely heard your frustration here, as I've had with- with several- several of my patients, that family members are not getting the vaccines. What should I do? I think that you have to limit their access to you. You have to, um, make a stance to- to- to, uh, make sure that if they do come in your house, they're- they're limited as long- uh, for as long as they can stay. The CDC says fifteen minutes, even with a mask on, can transmit the virus in a small room. And I think that what you're going to need to do is just tell him, until you're vaccinated, I'd really rather you not come over. I'll tell you a funny story personally, my son, uh, I told him that if he didn't get vaccinated, he's twenty-two, he would sleep in the garage, and, uh, he got vaccinated. So, it's pretty hot outside in the summer for Louisiana. But having said that, you know, i- it's one of these deals, as the- as the other speaker had said, the- the young kids can bring this to you as well, so you have to be careful. The younger people are getting this virus in record numbers, and- and he just needs to- to learn that if- if he gets this virus, he may not, uh, he may not survive.
It's too late for the vaccine.
Those scare tactics are- aren't- aren't good in this situation, but having said that, you know, it's- you're going to have to limit his access to you, because you've been vaccinated, and we all know vaccinated persons can get the va- can get the virus.
Thank you. We're now going to go to our final poll question of the night. So, our final poll question is, for those that are not vaccinated, what is the top reason you have selected the not being vaccinated? Press one if there's a lack of access to the vaccine. Press two if COVID-19 is not as bad as people are making it out to be. Press three if you think it's the negative vaccine side effects. Press four if you don't trust the vaccine, and press five if there's a lack of trust in institutions, such as the government or FDA. Again, what is the top reason you have not been vaccinated? Press one for lack of access to the vaccine. Press two for COVID-19 is not as bad as people are making it out to be. Press three if you believe it's the negative vaccine side effects. Press four if you don't trust the vaccine, or press five if it's a lack of trust in the institutions, such as the government or FDA. Okay, the responses are in. It seems as if our results show that four percent of you say there's a lack of access to the vaccine. Fifteen percent says COVID-19 is not as bad as people are making it out to be. Twenty-two percent think it's the negative side effects that's preventing them from getting the vaccines. Twenty-two percent also say they don't trust the vaccine, and thirty-seven percent say there's a lack of trust in institutions. We thank everyone for participating in that poll. So, we're going to- before we give closing remarks from our panelists, just want to make a few, um, brief statements. There were so many great questions that were asked tonight, and unfortunately, we did not have the time to get to all of them. However, we still want to hear from- hear from you. Please stay on the line after we end the event tonight, and you'll be able to record a message for us. Thank you so much, and we'll have final closing remarks from each of our panelists. Dr. S.J.
In closing, I want to ask and beg all of you who are not yet vaccinated to please go to a reliable source, not just the- not just Dr. Google, but go to a site where- which has reliable information, not just Facebook. Um, one of the articles you can look for is the New England Journal of Medicine, New England Journal of Medicine, and then you scroll to COVID, and you go to vaccines. It's a free source, and it answers most of the questions, and some that you haven't asked yet. So, please think about getting the vaccine. The vaccine side effects may be bad, but if you get COVID, it's worse.
Thank you, Dr. S.J. Dr. King?
Uh, appreciate to be able to participate in this tonight. Um, this was interesting and fun. I, uh, would just like to dispel those myths that these- these in- these injections change your DNA, that these injections, that messenger RNA technology is old, I'm sorry, is new. This technology's been around for almost two decades. Uh, it has just been, um, assimilated and brought out during this pandemic, and it was able to be made faster as a result of the money that the federal government provided for them to make these viruses, I mean, make these vaccines, I'm sorry. So, as a result, the- the- those- those funds have- have been what rushed this thing through with the- the availability of money, the different Pfizer, uh, AstraZeneca, they were all able to make these vaccines in record time, and that's to be applauded, because that's not ever been done before either. As- as a result, they understood the severity of this pandemic, and, uh, a gentleman, early on in- in- in the pandemic in March of last year, made the comment, "Oh, this thing might be around for three or four years." I'm starting to believe him. I thought it would be gone last July in twenty-twenty. I thought it would be gone this July in twenty, uh, twenty-one. Neither has occurred, and it just keeps- keeps moving forward, keeps mutating, which is what these RNA viruses do, and I just urge you, plead with you, please, get these vaccines. We're all, as healthcare providers, working ourselves to death, seeing a hundred or more patients in different clinics and that, and it's just gotten to the point where i- it's- the- the unvaccinated people are the ones tending to come down with this more than vaccinated, although we're seeing vaccinated patients get this virus, but they're just not as sick. Please get this vaccine, I beg of you, and pray that you will.
And Dr. Mann, any closing thoughts?
Um, yes, I too would like to implore everyone, if they have not been vaccinated, to go ahead and get a vaccine, um, to become fully vaccinated for COVID, just to go through with it. Um, the world that we live in today is very different from that, you know, of even two years ago. But also, we have to look at, uh, I think with a lot of people's hesitancies, like the world has changed over the past, you know, tens to hundreds of years, and we have all of this technology for a reason. Um, the technology has been put into the production of the COVID vaccine, as has been the research. Um, I know there's some- still some hesitancy among people, but I feel as though if people, um, are living like they might have lived in the, you know, early nineteen hundreds, where they are isolated, and they are only interacting with their family, you know, and there's no one else within a thirty-five or forty-mile radius, then, you know, we wouldn't have the problems that we do have today. But you have to keep in mind that we are much more mobile as- as a population. We interact with much more people, and much, um, greater opportunities that we do. So, we also have to bear in mind that with all of these changes in our lifestyle, that, um, therein, we do have to protect ourselves from the virus, and that the technology has been put in to the development of the vaccines. And so, um, certainly, the safety record is there versus the detrimental, um, effect of COVID. You know, once a person has had COVID, um, and certainly those people who have died from it, there's no bringing them back. Um, so, I would really encourage everyone, if they have not been vaccinated, to get vaccinated, because those are things that we can't change. Once the infection has occurred, um, and certainly, once people that we love have died, there's- there's no turning back from that. Um, and certainly, many of these deaths could be prevented at this time. In the beginning, it couldn't have been in many circumstances, but now, we have a resource to try to at least limit, um, the spread of this virus and the effects of it. So, I really implore everyone to try to get the vaccine if they have not done so already.